Prior to tonight's meeting, we will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Klein, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
President, for your former presence, we are always grateful through these trying times that you are always at your feet and that you don't fear anything. You just ask for your wisdom and guidance every day today, trying to understand what it is that we should do on behalf of the citizens of Sandusky. These things we ask in our name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Briggsley, call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Twine? Mr. Meinzler?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
President.
Mr. Poole?
President.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here. Commissioner DeYoung, before the minutes of our meeting of August 24th, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I move to accept the minutes of the August 24th meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
A motion and a second? Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Once again, we're holding this Sandusky City Commission meeting electronically. Commissions and staff are in attendance through an Internet hookup in a variety of safe locations, or they are present here today. We've asked our audience to either submit their questions or their comments in writing to our commission clerk, and we will answer those that pertain to legislation. As that legislation comes before us, as well as provide a response to any other audience questions from the appropriate staff. I'd also like to acknowledge the fact that those participating here in this meeting are doing so with the appropriate distancing and with face masks. We have on our agenda a public hearing for a planned unit development located on First Street this evening. I believe that hearing is going to be conducted by our Greg Volz. Greg, are you with us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Can everyone hear me? I have the short presentation, if you don't mind, before for the public hearing, and we have a couple of comments submitted to us. This is for a zone map amendment for a planned unit development district. The site is at 1643 First Street, the former Apex property. The applicant is proposing a planned unit development to construct 42 three-bedroom villas and 18-bedroom detached patio homes, 18 two-bedroom detached patio homes. The plan also calls for various site amenities for condominium owners, including boat dockage, walking trails, a pool, and more. The PUD is Chapter 1155 of the City of Sandusky Planning and Zoning Code, which is meant to promote progressive development of land and construction there by encouraging planned unit developments to achieve a list of desired outcomes. The site falls within a focus area of the Sandusky Bicentennial Vision 2018 Comprehensive Plan adopted in February of 2016. The plan states for this portion of First Street to have an initiative should be to develop waterfront residential on former industrial sites while maintaining and or creating public access. The applicant, throughout discussions regarding the site, has been supportive of the Sandusky Bay Pathway project-
Is now joining.
...and shows it on the PUD preliminary plans. The Sandusky Bay Pathway is a priority initiative called out in the comprehensive plan as well, and we are glad the applicant is proposing to work with the city on the pathway along First Street. The proposed PUD does meet density requirements set forth in Chapter 1155. Parking provided for this development meets the amount required in Chapter 1149. During the design phase of the final development plan, the applicant will need to provide, amongst other items, engineering feasibility studies showing as necessary water, sewer drainage, electricity, telecommunications, natural gas lines, waste disposal, street widths and dimensions, and the extent of earthwork required for site prep and development. With this being a condominium development, the site would likely have an HOA to handle community space needs as well as deed restrictions, protective covenants, and other legal statements or devices to ensure the final plat is adhered to by the owner's purchasing property within the development. These documents will have to be provided when the applicant is made for final development plan approval. At the July 22nd, 2020 meeting, Planning Commission recommended approval of a zone map amendment to create a planned unit development at 1643 First Street. Planning Commission has made this recommendation based on the preliminary plan with the following recommendations that are shown on your screen. The public comments received. The Shades of Nantucket Homeowners Association is a neighboring property at 1643 First Street. Bob Waldoch and 1643 Limited are requesting a zoning change to allow planned unit development at their First Street location. The Shades of Nantucket HOA does not formally object to the zoning change, but wanted the record to state that there is a legal dispute filed in Erie County Common Plea's Court where plaintiff 1643 Limited filed suit against the Shades of Nantucket HOA, along with all property owners on Nantucket Drive. This is a dispute concerning land that Bob Waldoch and 1643 Limited have recently claimed to now own and have incorporated in their future plans for development. We intend to have this situation resolved through the legal system, but wanted this legal dispute noted and request this zoning change be tabled at today's meeting and not reconsidered until the legal dispute is resolved. Respectfully, Ron Goldstein, the President of Shades of Nantucket. This was another public comment received. Dear Mr. Volz, on August 11th, a lawsuit was filed in Erie County regarding a land dispute involving a small section of land in a northeast corner of 1643 First Street. The area is highlighted on the attached survey map and shown in the attached photos. Although not part of any of the submerged land leases associated with the Nantucket or the named individuals, the association is trying to claim ownership of a portion of 1643 property through adverse possession. This portion of land is in question and has no impact on the structures proposed in the PUD. I therefore respectfully ask the Commission to move forward with today's review and approve the PUD application as presented. Signed, Robert Waldoch, 1414 First Street. Here are the images that were submitted as well with that last public comment. That was the public comments received.
You done, Mr. Volz?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thanks. This public hearing, we, I believe we have answered or asked or listened to the two questions from the public. My understanding is there are no additional questions, so I will open up for questions from Commission during this public hearing. Any questions from Commissions regarding this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to introduce this at the, at the public hearing to start. The disputed portion of land is, since both the taxpayers that we represent all, I don't think we should get involved in the dispute between neighbors over this land, so I'm going to make a motion during the meeting that we approve the PUD with the beaches inclusion in the PUD being conditioned on the resolution of the lawsuit pending in Erie County Common Plea's Court, that I think that would resolve things for both parties appropriately on our part.
Any additional questions from Commission during the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I appreciate very much the anticipated development and the investment in the city. This is, it's critical that we take advantage that we can to bring more residents to live in the city, to build our tax base, and so I will support that. I would note, however, Mr. Chairman, that there were some public comments with respect to this development. I don't know if you want to handle those. I mean, it's obviously up to you whether you want to present those during the legislation, nor whether you want to consider that as part of the public hearing process, but there were two, I think.
My, my understanding from Mr. Volz was he read the two questions from the audience that he had. Do you have any additional questions, Mr. Volz?
Mr. Chairman, they came by email from Mackenzie Spriggs.
I think those are the ones-
Just less than an hour ago.
Okay.
I saw one from Tim Schwanger.
Yes, from Ms. Johnson.
We'd like to discuss those during the public hearing? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Murray?
I just want to make sure that you were aware that there were those two comments, and that's up to you as to whether you want to handle it an hour later.
I'm aware, and I think they belong perhaps in the legislation.
Okay.
I want to reiterate Mr. Murray's comments. I've driven by this piece of property most of my life, and it has sat vacant for almost all of my life. I am thrilled that potentially there might be 60 families living on this site, and I cannot remember the last home that was built, let alone a development like this was built within the city limits, so I'm certainly supportive of this, and I know, I know the principles building this, and it will be of excellent quality, so I'm, I'm thrilled that we have this before us. Any additional comments from the public hearing?
Commission President, just for, so that we, this is just in here, so we, we have an adequate record for the actual hearing itself. Maybe it'd be best if Ms. Briggs read the concerns and comments that we received emails from, so they could be part of the total record, and then you guys can address them.
You're suggesting that should be in the public hearing?
Correct.
Excellent. Ms. Briggs, will you read the audience's communication?
Yes, Mr. President, I will. I'm bringing it up on your screen now. So for those, those comments are, "Planned unit development ordinances regarding PUDs are set out by the city or town in which the PUD land lies. PUDs can be distinguished by a number of characteristics such as open land for community and resident enjoyment and use, amenities such as tennis courts, swimming pools, biking, hiking, or walking trails, various types of housing such as single-family homes, town homes, condominiums, or apartments. Emphasis on open land for community enjoyment. Currently, there is zero access to Sandusky Bay, or Sandusky Bayfront along First Street." Referring to the 1996 Sandusky Port Plan, the plan specifically recommends public amenities be included in development on this property. A small park with play equipment and access to the beach area is desirable." That item came from Tim Schwanger at 362 Sheffield Way. The second comment says, "Will the development further complicate the flooding on First Street? Is there enough sewer and water infrastructure to support such a large project when the roadway is always flooding in the area? I have concerns with the five-foot brick wall plan for the south side of the property as to how it will look from the street. I understand the EPA cleared the land for commercial use only and not residential. What has changed that the land can be used for residential? Does the development expect to obtain any grant money from the city or any other help from the city with this project?" And that question came from Sharon Johnson at 1139 Fifth Street.
Thank you, Ms. Briggs. Now that we have those questions read into the record, we will respond to them during the legislation and take them up again during our, during the normal legislation as it comes before us. Any additional questions, Commissions, on this public hearing? If there are no further comments or questions, I'll declare this public hearing closed. Ms. Briggs, are there any questions from the public that pertain to tonight's agenda?
No, Mr. President, those were the only two.
Great. Commissioner DeYoung, before you settle, communication from staff recommending various legislation, may I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have seven consent items to consider this evening. Do any of you wish to move these items, any of these items, to the regular agenda? Ms. Briggs, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. The consent agenda should be on your screen as well now. Those items are, Item A is for maintenance of State Route 2 in the Sandusky City limit. Item B is an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for Warren Street Reconstruction Project. Item C is an application to Highway Safety Improvement Program for the Meg Street Reconstruction and Multi-Use PAC Project. Item D is a grant application to the Ohio Development Services Agency for the Abandoned Gas Station Cleanup Fund. Item E is a grant application to the U.S. EPA for the Brownfields Settlement. Item F is the acceptance of Erie County tax levies. And Item G is a submerged land lease payment for the Sandusky Sailing Club.
Having heard these resolutions and ordinances, Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move to accept Consent Agenda Items A through, what was it?
G.
G. Through G, and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the Consent Agenda shall take effect in accordance with section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with section 13 or 14 of the City Council.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Twine? Yes. Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Now on the resolutions and the ordinances.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Those resolutions and ordinances are passed. Now turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Briggs, will you present Item Number One, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item Number One is an ordinance amending the official zone map of the City of Sandusky to rezone parcel numbers 57-01424.000 and 57.04125.000 located at 1643 First Street for a residential planned unit development and approving the preliminary plans for the proposed planned unit development.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension and release in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, I wonder if you can put on our screen again those two questions that pertain to this piece of legislation, so we can reach out to the appropriate staff for perhaps an answer on those.
I hope that they are up on your screen now.
They are. Excellent. That worked great. Mr. Volz, would you be the appropriate person to answer that question?
Thank you, Mr. President. I could try to answer some of the comments and questions. For the response to Ms. Johnson, the applicant is working with our engineering department to ensure that the infrastructure is adequate in that area, and they also have to meet our floodplain requirements as well, as well as the, we are in discussions, one of the conditional approval items was that the applicant continues to work with us on the brick wall along First Street to try to come to an agreement on the final plan of something a little more appropriate and pedestrian-friendly. And then the EPA questions are probably best left to the EPA. We did require that during the final plan, the applicant submit to us that they, that the EPA has cleared the land for this type of development.
Development. Thank you, Mr. Volz. Who, Mr. Whipser?
Through the Commission President, related to Ms. Johnson's last question regarding development incentives, they would be as of right eligible for residential tax abatement, 10 years, 75 percent, and Director Alasko, please correct me, but I do not believe we've had any conversations with them regarding development incentives beyond the abatement that would be available to any residential property developed within the city.
They certainly are not excluded from that, though.
No, no.
Excellent. Would any staff be able to speak to, I'm looking at Mr. Schwanger's question regarding the use of a beach and a play park?
Certainly through the Commission President, we have, dating back to when we first heard about the project, had negotiations about public access. The developer has done what he feels is appropriate for this specific site. He has been working with us in the Sandusky Bay Pathway to have easement across the property and will work with us on that. We were not able to gain additional concessions, but did feel comfortable with this going forward based on the pathway of being able to come through the front of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Whipser. Commissioners, additional questions or comments regarding this legislation?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I'd like to note that I do have a big concern about the flooding. I'll support and vote for this, but I've been down that road several, several times in the last few years, and that's going to have to be addressed. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Briggs.
I want to underscore how important Ms. Johnson's comments are in the commitment by the developer to continue to work with the Planning Commission, the Planning Department, to develop a plan for a wall that maintain, or some kind of barrier that provides the privacy that they want, but also provides sightlines into the bay. You know, I think about the wall that was erected behind the Chesapeake Bay, Chesapeake Loft garages or whatever they are, the storage areas. That's an unmitigated disaster. Nobody wants to walk past that monolithic wall. There should have been, you know, access ports built into it so you could see through, and maybe put a, put some fencing in it too, but I appreciate Mr. Waldoch's willingness to continue to work with, with the staff, because otherwise you're just erecting a wall along the water, and it's very, that would be inappropriate, and it is necessary for the public to be able to see through there. So that would be an important factor for me to consider when it would eventually come back.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
This is perhaps for the engineer, just, I'm interested in some commentary on how, what kind of position are we that we're going to be able to deal with the flooding? And I recognize that he's working with us, but I'm, I'm just interested in how big a task this is going to be, and ultimately what we're going to be left with at the end of, at the end of the day. Additionally, I suppose for perhaps planning, I'm not certain, with regard to this wall and to the mission, at the point that we come at loggerheads with this, how do we get this resolved? What are our options, is really what I'm saying? I mean, we're, I think it's reasonable what Mr. Murray has suggested about openings in the wall. There's any number of things you can do, but if the individual that building this was interested in doing that, he could have done that to begin with. And I'm more concerned about talking about how everybody's going to work together and at the end not being satisfied with the outcome.
Mr. Klein, I know you're out there, and I wonder if you could speak to the flooding issue on First Street. I think that we have found a way to deal with the high-water issue this past six months, maybe a year or so. Is there, is there a permanent resolution out there, or just so we're, I guess, the Commission wants to be certain that we're not adding to this problem.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, to you and the rest of the Commissioners, the bay level has actually been higher many times this year than it was last year, and we have not had the same issues to the extent that we did last year. We came up with a plan halfway through the summer last year, and it, we've reimplemented it this year. The flooding on First Street is a result of the bay levels. Last year, there was actually some water coming over the subject property and into First Street. So to be honest, any of the work that's done on this site would probably actually make sure that the water does not come over the site. Mr. Waldoch actually worked with us last year to ensure that his site was not contributing to any of the water issues on First Street. Hopefully, our goal, when the water level and the bay levels go down, and we can get some dry pipes over there at Nantucket and throughout First Street, our goal is to put some backflow preventers and some other infrastructure in, the chambers in that area. We just can't get in there while the bay levels are still high. So as soon as those levels go down, we're planning on doing what's needed and getting the pumps and doing everything that's necessary. So I really don't see how the, any development on this site could cause the bay level to go higher and backfill or backflood First Street any more than it currently does.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I may address Mr. Poole's question to invoke Nancy Reagan. I think the answer is just say no, because that is, that is the authority that we do hold. If we don't, if, if, it's like any negotiation, if we don't get to a point where we're comfortable, then we just say no. So I think this, this Commission, as I understand it, Mr. Harris, has absolute authority over whether or not we approve the final PUD plans, and so, yeah, I think we want the investment, the developer wants the development, so I think there's a lot in the Senate to come to the middle.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
As liaison to planning, I can assure you that the planning staff is not for a solid wall, and I won't vote for a solid wall, and I know other Commission members are not for a solid wall across First Streets.
I think the point that we're making, and Mr. Murray's making, and Mr. Poole's concerned with, and you have just reiterated, is that we're not handing this developer carte blanche. There are, this is the first step in a very long journey, and there are going to be opportunities for us to review how this proceeding, and as Mr. Murray said, we just say no at some point in time if, if it does not meet our expectations or our specifications. So we, I don't think you can ever guarantee a level of cooperation, no matter how well you, intention you go into these things, but you're, Mr. Murray is exactly right, we have absolute authority in the very end, and that's, and that's how we will treat it very, very sincerely.
To you, Commission President, just so the public's aware, this is the beginning step of a long process. The preliminary was sent to planning. They are asking the Commission to approve the preliminary reports. They're going to have 18 months. They can ask for an extension of time, but it's going to go back to planning again for final approval of the final plans, and then back to Commission again.
Long journey.
Yep, so.
Long journey.
There'll be checks and balances, the whole stuff, along the way.
Excellent. We'll be watching.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Just a last word about Mr. Schwanger's question dealing with the 1996 Port Authority Plan and the change of that. I wanted to suggest that it was just a plan that 25, 30 years ago, people thought was a good idea. Hearing about it, thinking about it, at this point, I believe that what was, is proposed now is definitely an improvement on that plan, and there are, we are improving the public's access in other places in the community where there's water and, where there's waterfront access. I don't agree with everything that we've done, but there, the public is not being shut out, and this is probably the best use for this property, and it is privately owned, and we need to take that into consideration.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Is this the, excuse me?
Yes.
One more. I'm sorry. I didn't make my amendment.
Okay.
I do, I would like a motion, make a motion that we approve this PUD with the beaches inclusion in the PUD being conditioned on the resolution of the lawsuit pending in Erie County Court of Common Plea's.
Second.
And motion and a second discussion.
Well, I'd just like to, I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with the sentiment, but I just would like assurance from the law director that that does not poison this somehow or another. It seems appropriate.
It is appropriate. And to you, Commission President, to Commissioner Murray, I believe you're basically saying, Commissioner Poole, that we had a highlighted portion of what appears to be the beach, and that you are basically saying you approve the PUD with the exception of that little sliver being included on the condition that, you know, I guess the lawsuit is resolved in Mr. Waldoch's favor, but if it's not, you still want the PUD to go forward with the, with the exclusion of that beach.
Correct.
That's appropriate.
The lawsuit decides what happens with the, whether it stays in or not. That's, I think we should state that upfront.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Murray.
My, my only concern is that what happens if the lawsuit is not resolved at such a point in time that they're willing to proceed with development? I mean, I, if, if the, if the property is outside of the PUD, then I assume it could be folded back into the property at some future point, so I think that's fine. I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that we are all in accord that the lawsuit doesn't have to be resolved before they can start construction.
No, we're talking about whether or not it's included in the PUD. That's what I'm talking about, that we not include it before it's decided.
Exactly.
It shouldn't, it's not meant to stop anything from going on.
If I could just, I think that's right, is through the Commission President to the Commissioners, it's that the PUD would be approved as is on the condition that if it turns out he doesn't have control of this property, or doesn't have sole control of this property, that that piece would be taken out. I think that's an important-
Correct.
Do it in that order as opposed to the other order.
Right. So we don't have to do it over.
Does that make sense?
Excellent. But that amendment will not be an anchor around, around this project.
Exactly. It's approved with the ability to take it out, as opposed to not approve it with the ability to draw it in.
Correct.
That makes it simple.
Correct.
Great. Mr. Poole, that's the form of the motion, and I believe I heard a second to that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Briggs, will you call the role on that motion, please?
Yes. Through you, Mr. President. Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That motion for that amendment is approved. Now we'll turn back to the piece of legislation. I believe we've already had adequate discussion on the legislation. Can I make a motion for that legislation, please?
So moved.
I thought we.
Got a motion?
Yep.
Mr. Briggs, will you call the role on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Now on the ordinance.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Mr. Briggs, will you present item number two, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the subscription licensing for Saufis, Full Guard Plus for firewall security, and Intercept X with EDR for endpoint protection from Selectus Consulting LLC of Marysville, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Service Cooperative Purchasing Program, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioner, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
Please, the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
This is one wall that I am totally supportive of, so as long as we're not asked to explain how it works, then I'm great with this, because I have confidence in Stuart.
Excellent. Additional discussion. Mr. Briggs, will you call the role of the motion, please?
Yes. Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Now on the ordinance.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Mr. Briggs, will you present item number three, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with D.L. Smith Concrete LLC of Norwalk, Ohio, for the Shoreline Park Erosion Control Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioner, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I'm opposed to the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, you want to share with us what's going on with this project? It's a high-profile project, I know that.
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. President. This is the shoreline on the westernmost finger at Shoreline Park. I think everybody's realized how much erosion there has been out there. There were some CDBG funds set aside through the plan this year, through the community development plan, and we wanted to make sure that we got on this as quickly as possible. The engineer's estimate was $98,000 with about $19,000 additional for alternate items. The bids came in just over $90,000, and that includes all three alternates as well. So what we're going to be doing is we will be putting concrete around the exterior of the, we keep calling it a finger, I don't know exactly what it's called, but around the outside of that, that finger on the western side. And then we're going to put some catch basins within the grass area, and because we were able to award the alternates, we can also resurface a little bit of that turnaround at the north end. So what you'll see is you'll have an ADA compliant walkway around the outside of it, and then between the water and that walkway, because of the steep slope, we're still going to have concrete, but we're going to delineate that as well. So not only are we trying to make sure that we stabilize that shoreline, but we're also going to make it accessible, more ADA accessible, so anybody can get out there and fish and use that facility. The one thing that I do want to point out is I know everybody's really excited to get this moving, but we are still waiting for environmental clearances from the federal government, and we're working through submerged land lease at that location as well. So our goal is to get it done this year, but if those two things drag on, we obviously don't want to be pouring concrete up against the waterfront this winter. So we do have a completion date of May 1st, but we're going to push pretty hard to get D.L. Smith to finish later this year if we can.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional questions, Commissioner? Mr. Briggs, will you call the role of the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Now on the ordinance.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Murray.
Before we begin his report, I just want to tell you how delighted I am that when you call for the city manager's report, the same voice is going to be answering for a while yet, so. I'm delighted.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner President. I'll start with the donations. First, a donation of $1,000 received from an anonymous donor to the Sandusky Police Department for the purchase of four digital cameras for the Patrol Division to use to photograph accidents, crime scenes, and other related incidents. I'd ask for a motion to approve that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Objection, that motion should be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks.
Second, a donation of $20 from Thelma Blair for the police department. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Objection, that motion should be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to Ms. Blair.
Thank you to Mark Haynes Construction for their donation of 80 tons of type 601 stone with an in-kind value of $3,200 to be used for shoreline restoration at Pipe Creek Wildlife Reserve. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and discussion, and a second discussion. Objection, that motion should be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to new and old business, starting with the police department. Just a reminder that it's campaign season, and along with that comes individuals that steal, deface, or damage political signs or flags representing individuals running for various offices. It's a reminder that it's illegal to trespass on property to deface, damage, or steal these items, and that charges can be filed by property owners if anyone is caught committing these acts. Moving on to the fire department. Sandusky Fire received the Mission Lifeline EMS Gold Plus Achievement Award from the American Heart Association and the American Stroke Association. This award recognizes that Sandusky Fire has improved measures for the treatment of patients who experience ST elevation, myocardial infarction, or STEMI, the deadliest type of heart attack caused by a blockage of blood flow to the heart. The department earned the award by meeting specific criteria and standard of performance for quick and appropriate treatment through emergency procedures to reestablish blood flow to blocked arteries in heart attack patients. The Gold Plus Award is Mission Lifeline's highest level of recognition for EMS, and this will be the fourth consecutive year that the fire department has been recognized by the Heart Association through its Quality Achievement Award program, so we congratulate them for that. I don't know, Commissioner Meinzler, as a former chief, if you have any comments on that at all?
Well, it's been a long time since I've been a paramedic, but congratulations, yeah.
That's great. Moving on to the finance department. We were recently notified that the city of Sandusky will be recipient of $184,723 in community development block grant funding. It was made through an announcement by Congresswoman Capter. Commissioner Waddington, thanks for pointing that out. We had not been made aware yet when that appeared in the Morning Journal, and we are still awaiting the funds and information in regards to the eligible use, but once we have that information, we'll report back. But as all of you know, anything that's, you know, we can put towards the benefit of the community will be greatly appreciated and is needed during these difficult times. Also, an update that the city receives additional $252,409.82 in CARES Act funding. The city is extremely grateful for those funds and will utilize the funds to offset safety service wages that would normally be paid for the general fund. Also, the next finance committee meeting is scheduled for this Friday, September 18th, at 8:00 a.m. Due to COVID-19, the meeting will not be open to the public, but can be viewed on the city's YouTube channel. For the Public Works Department, commemorative benches located at the Jackson Street Pier are currently available for purchase. Those wishing to be honorary person, business, or organization can choose a location from a pre-designated site map and customize a plaque to be installed on the bench. For more information, please contact project coordinator Megan Stookey at 419-627-5878, or M Stookey, that's M S T O O K E Y, at ci.sandusky.oh.us. I do want to give Megan a big thank you. She did a lot of work to get that program ready to go with an assist from some others working for the city, but she did the heavy lifting. Also, the citywide cleanup drop-off day has been scheduled for Saturday, October 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. At the Shelby Street Boat Launch overflow parking lots, as always, residents will be required to show ID, and due to the pandemic, all volunteers and residents will be asked to wear masks and gloves upon entering the property. In addition, residents who are capable will be asked to assist with unloading their items to reduce exposure. Please refer to social media, the city's website, the register, or call 419-627-5829 for a description of what materials will and will not be accepted. And thanks once again to the Gentlemen's Club and all other volunteers who make this event possible. And I just want to personally thank Director Klein and his entire team, who I know worked really hard under what has been a crazy year to make this work. It wasn't easy, and I'm grateful for their time on that. There is one more announcement, that the yard waste drop-off days are scheduled for Saturday, October 17th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and Sunday, October 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Residents are welcome to drop off yard waste at Barnes Nursery at 1630 Camp Road in Huron, free of charge with proof of Sandusky residency. Please make sure to wear a mask and practice safe social distancing while on-site. Also, surveying has begun in the right-of-way along Hayes Avenue for the signal improvement project, and the public parking lot on Wayne Street north of Subway, and the Market Grounds parking lot at the corner of Market and Hancock Streets are scheduled for recirculation over the next few weeks. Streets and traffic crews will be performing most of the work during this time. Please adhere to all temporary no-parking signs that are posted. And then, community development and planning, Cold Creek Crossing. In the next week or two, the city will be advertising a request for qualifications from a qualified real estate brokerage firm to select a residentially focused real estate firm to formally list for sale the remaining residential city-owned lots in the Cold Creek subdivision. Though the city has been successful in selling several lots for new home construction in the last 18 months, this has been done with little marketing, and given the renewed interest in new home construction in Sandusky, a strong housing market, low interest rates, and Sandusky's offering of residential tax abatement, an elevated marketing effort is warranted, so staff will review statements of qualifications and negotiating a listing agreement and lot prices for consideration by the city commission in upcoming weeks. And then finally, just a few meeting updates. Planning Commission will meet on September 23rd at 4:30. Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on September 17th at 4:30 p.m. The Landmarks Commission meeting will take place on September 16th at 4:30 p.m., and the Arts and Culture Commission will be September 15th at 5:15 p.m. All of those meetings will be available to the public online. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions or take comments from the commission. Thank you.
Commissioner, do you have any questions for the city manager? Wow, you're getting a pass tonight, it appears.
That's good. I appreciate it.
Next item on our agenda, items of old business. Any items of old business, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I understand what the census is winding down. We're not doing real good there, and I understand this COVID-19's a big monster in our community, but I'd like to start or have a two-block approach as far as, one, safety concerns. We've had a ton of cars that are getting broken in in Sandusky, and I think, you know, for the neighborhood concern. And then the second part would be neighborhood engagement again, and I'd like to be involved with that if I possibly could. I know we lost Mr. Four. But, you know, I look at this about once a week while I ran back in January in the Sandusky River, okay? Build up neighborhoods, ran to contribute to improve neighborhoods in Sandusky, and I'd like to sustain, continue to rebuild, establish all neighborhoods, connect community stakeholders. I've heard that in the last two weeks enough on TV, okay? Along with staff in Cold and Forest, neighborhoods are the bloodline for our community of Sandusky. All right? So I would like to be involved if, and I'll do it on a volunteer basis at no charge, because it just seems, I'm, you know, out in the cleanups. When I got a washing machine and 10 tires right here in the Pipe Creek, and how many times, Mr. Murray or Ms. Brady, have you been down there and cleaned it out? We've got a litter problem. Later this week, I'll be doing some with the paper out on the Tiffany Avenue underpass. It's an absolute mess. Safety issues far, you've read it, right? When somebody's car got broken in twice, and he said his house is lit up better than Jackson Street Pier, you know, I take offense to that, okay? That's a former commission candidate ran, said his car broke in like five times. You know, it's on Facebook. I'm sure many of you in here probably read it. You know, we all say we don't read it, but we do. And beyond the cleanups, I think we got to get back and at least talk to people in these neighborhoods. We identified, and we got the toppers. Where are we going? Okay? And to get, I'm fine with what's going on downtown, but we need to have engagement as far as talking to these folks in the neighborhoods. All the problems aren't resolved with money. Could be something simple. And I think we've lost touch of it. That's just my concern as one. Okay? That's just my concern as one, okay? Thank you.
Additional items of old business.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poehl.
I agree with Mr. Waddington. Additionally, I just want to just take a moment to talk about the damaging of people's political signs. It's not a good look for the city, and I'm pretty agitated about it because I find it to be a very bad thing for our community to be known for. The country has arrived and realizes that a large segment of the country, people in the country have not received justice, have not been treated well, and we are trying to adjust, address that. It does not help the process when folks decide that they're going to step on other people's rights. Those who feel that they've not been treated well or think they have a cause, your cause, and I'll say this, I tend to be uncivil, your lives do not matter enough to justify taking someone else's rights. We have an obligation to step up and fulfill the promise that came with the Constitution for everyone, but you don't get it by stepping on other people's rights. And I think we should, hopefully, people will join with me. I'm not worried about getting stitches. I will snitch if I catch anybody tearing up anyone's sign. It doesn't matter which side of the fence you're on. It's wrong, it's not something we should be doing in this community, it's not the kind of place I want to live. I've been on the short end of the stick for a lot of years. I've managed to do just fine, but I understand, but it's not, you don't get to just switch, switch, turn the switch and do it otherwise. So please join with me in encouraging your neighbors to express themselves peaceably, appropriately, and keep your hands off of other people's property. Thank you.
Well put, Mr. Poehl, well put.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meidler.
Not certain if this is old business, but since it came up under neighborhood initiatives, we also had a bad problem of people breaking into cars, and Chief Orzak may let me know if this is appropriate, but we stopped calling the police so often because it was almost weekly or every couple, three nights that, you know, I'd find people's wallets or purses and stuff in my yard or in the yards in the neighborhood, and I'd take it back, and we just ended up, because, you know, they were never able to catch them. But the one thing I did notice is when one family moved out of one house, it come to a complete stop. So I, and that's something you wouldn't report, so I feel like maybe I should report that because wherever that family moved, I can guarantee that there's cars being broken into in that neighborhood. So that jogged my memory when you brought that up, so I will call Chief Orzak tomorrow.
Somewhat like the saying, if you see something, say something.
Yeah, but I'm not seeing anything, I gotta say something.
Thank you, Commissioner Meidler. Any other items of old business?
Mr. Chairman.
That would be Commissioner Harris.
Yes, I would just like to take this opportunity to address some comments that were brought to my attention by Chief Orzak this past week, I believe, regarding Amira's turn and my stance on that. So without further ado, I just wanted to take a moment to address these comments and would like to make it clear that I am in full support of our local law enforcement on this particular issue. I would also like to encourage the public to not make this a race issue when it should only be recognized for what it is, which is a public safety issue. Regardless of color, all establishments and patrons must conduct and enjoy themselves in a responsible manner. The gathering of crowds outside of this establishment after hours to the loud music, the gunplay that has taken place in the past is not only a disturbance to the residents surrounding the establishment, but also puts those people and their families, including children, at risk. And this behavior should not be taken lightly, as we have seen far too many unfortunate outcomes throughout the world and as nearby as Cleveland, where innocent lives have been taken because of senseless crimes. And I'm sure that, you know, that this is a trend, you know, that none of us want to see continue here, you know, in the city of Sandusky. In the end, for me, it comes down to accountability. Therefore, whatever sanctions are passed down from our local or state agencies, I support, and my hope is that the owners and its patrons will learn from this experience and find solutions to better coexist with their neighbors and those around them. So, thank you.
Additional items of old business, Commissioner. Items of new business.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meidler.
Is Chief Orzak on?
He is.
Okay, this may have come up in the past, and I know it's a privacy issue, but I do see some communities that have grants or help people put security cameras up in the neighborhoods in their houses, and the police keep a record of that, and if there's crime in the neighborhood, the police will be able to get those, that footage from that. Is that something that's ever been looked into in the community or vetted out?
Chief Orzak.
Through you to Chief Orzak.
Yeah, to Commissioner President, to Commissioner Meidler. We had looked at that about a year or two ago, and our concern is, when Trevor was the law director at the time, is that if citizens give us information like that, it could become a public record, which would make that situation a little bit unsafe. We do do surveillance and, you know, check different locations and residences and businesses on a normal practice when we're investigating crimes, but I think that the issue of people giving us information and that becoming a public record might outweigh the benefit. So that's why we haven't went down that road.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Additional items of new business, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
Mr. Poehl. No, you can go ahead and let Mr. Poehl go.
Commissioner Poehl.
I'm just, since it just came up, it takes a moment to process. The concept of we don't take tips from citizens about things that occur because they, it might be unsafe, is that what that policy or philosophy is? I just, I'm having trouble swallowing that, and we're not going to resolve it now, but I'm having trouble buying into that. If the community is not going to be involved in helping the police to solve crimes, as in if I have a camera on my house that sees something that I'm not going to show it to you because the city, us, through the police department discourages it, I think this all is lost. You can't, with a 42, 48-man police department, you can't police this city without the cooperation and help of the citizens. And quite frankly, whether I gave you some information, gave the police department information about something, or I'm just minding my own business, the obligation to provide for my safety and come up with policies, procedures, and the city's responsibility to figure out a way to make me safe does not change. So that's just my thoughts on that, and perhaps, I think the intention was well-intended, but the outcomes, it's just too high. We cannot be a place of where criminals feel like they can run the place because that's what happens in the, where gangs take over. Nobody wants to talk. So, please consider, reconsider that position.
I'll give you a call, Mr. Poehl, and we can have a deeper conversation about it.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meidler.
Didn't want to make a big thing, but I think I kind of understand a little bit, and my take is, there was some drug activity in my neighborhood. I would take my phone, I'd walk up to the window, and I'd take picture of all occupants in the car, I'd take a picture of driver's license, I'd call the detective bureau. I didn't care if they knew. But I think the city, from what I'm taking from Mr. Orzak or Chief Orzak, is that the city supplied grant money for the cameras for the little old lady around my neighbor on the corner, and, you know, they had a right to the footage. That may put the little old lady around the corner in jeopardy. I kind of understand that. I wasn't concerned about that when I provided it, so I could see that there'd be, I'm not a, Mr. Harris may be able to explain, but I could see where the city provided the money, and the cameras on this house, they have a right to that footage.
Awkward situation. Allow Chief Orzak to communicate directly with Commissioner Poehl and provide some explanation for that.
Thank you.
Additional items of new business, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes, today, I would like to bring before my fellow commissioners and ask for their consideration in the possibility of changing the name of Washington Row to that of a civil rights leader. The decision that would ultimately, I would hope would be made by the public via online poll. This idea was brought to me by a gentleman that I've known for quite some years and that I also have the pleasure of serving on the Community Relations Board with Dan, Mr. Dan Williams, who could actually, who couldn't be present here today due to a union meeting. But that being said, I would just like to share something that he provided me with, and of course, to share on his behalf. So without further ado, I'll make this as quick as possible. Street names and statuses that comprise, yeah, that comprise the cityscape should make us proud. They should not produce feelings of angst, distrust, and resentment. Being that we live in what is now known as the information age, we are confronted with facts that complicate the romantic treatment usually afforded to political dignitaries such as U.S. presidents. Many of these men, and many of whom are honored by street names in Sandusky, were not the fair, altruistic heroes they are represented as being. Instead, they were primary contributors to a state of horror endured by many of the latest centuries. Some may say their actions are the roots of contemporary ethnic division, and I ask why not dedicate a street or streets to a local person or persons who represent high moral standard and heroism. We should not settle for archaic norms. We should leave this place better than how we inherited it. Allow, and also allow him to say, it's impossible to erase the legacy of these U.S. presidents, nor would I want to. Replace a name, replacing a name does not do that. These men are monoliths, and this opportunity is for Sandusky to tap into some of its progressive lineage and make a clear shift in the cultural paradigm nationwide. He went on to share more, which I could, which I'd be more than happy to share with my fellow commissioners in an email. But again, I would just ask you all to take a moment and/or make a motion, you know, to consider this piece of, yeah, to consider what I brought before you today.
Mr. Harris, is that, is that in form of motion? You're asking for a motion? Do I understand?
Yes, please.
Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poehl.
I'm not prepared to second that, but I am willing to take some time and listen to what he's trying to accomplish. I'm not, but no, I'm not prepared to second this at this time.
We have a motion before us, we do not have a second. We do not have a second for that motion, so that motion fails for lack of a second. But I believe that Mr. Poehl's indicating that he is, will be a willing participant in the discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meidler.
I stand with Mr. Poehl on this one. I mean, I think that it's appropriate to give this consideration. We just need to think about it more than, you know, the couple of minutes that we've had to think about it, and I think it needs to be considered in the larger context, too. So I, it's good, and I've heard one formulation of Mr. Harris's motion to be a motion to give a consideration as opposed to a motion to change it, and so I'm with the spirit of that formulation, that form, the earlier formulation.
You're in agreement to, of a motion to consider?
Yes.
Consider, but not make a change?
Yeah. Not right now. I want to consider it, I want to consider it in a larger context.
And is that, is that in the form of a motion, Mr. Harris? That is not in form of a motion?
It's not in the form of a motion. He raises, Mr. Harris raises an important point, and it's worthy of consideration, but it needs more consideration than a couple of minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I'd like to suggest that that possibly goes through the Community Relations Commission. I think maybe getting a little bit more background understanding on that, and then possibly submit that up to the Community Relations Commission might be ready to start with that request. I think the concept is a good idea, and as I think Commissioner Poehl and Commissioner Murray just stated, I think, you know, we'd like a little bit more information and, you know, that type of input into that request.
Thank you, Commissioner Twine. I think detail is important on exactly how that would impact the inhabitants of that street. So there are a lot of unanswered questions, and further discussions, certainly the route to go, and I appreciate your thoughts, Commissioner Twine, on perhaps sending this to the Community Relations Commission. Perhaps that's a starting point for that discussion.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Harris.
Yes, first off, I would just like to, you know, thank you all for your input and your consideration, and I have had, you know, I might also note that I have had, you know, conversations, you know, with Eric Woopsir on this matter, and, you know, many others have certainly brought many things to my attention as it relates to, you know, changing of addresses and informing other potential businesses and things of that nature. So I am aware that there are many things to consider in this matter and look forward to diving deeper into this and ultimately sharing, you know, details with you all. So, thank you.
Do you, Commissioner President, to the commission, the law department will assist once you guys take a deeper delve into this. Obviously, when my first tenure here, we changed Orlando Pace Parkway, but there's a revised code section and laws that have to be followed as opposed to just a simple renaming at the commission level.
A little more complicated than it looks, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I want to suggest this is Commissioner Harris's, Commissioner Harris's project, and that he take it, if he wants to take it to the Human and Community Relations Commission, then he take it himself, bring it to them to talk about and do the, whatever's, whatever he thinks is necessary to bring this forward. I will say, just so you know what we're dealing with, for me, it's not just about one street it deals with. The process needs to explain how we're naming streets in a broad, general sense. Additionally, as an African American, I'm not particularly interested in any more symbolism. So you need to build a case that says this is productive for this reason, and you see this coming out of it. We have a statue of Martin Luther King in Washington Park. There's a lot of things going on. I've got a lifetime of African American Month and all these kinds of things. I'm not particularly going to be, I'm just not buying off on just, you know, this would be nice and we'd feel better about it. So this needs to be positive, needs to have some teeth behind it and some actually what it's going to accomplish. There's other things we can do, hiring, lots of different things that can be done here to make life better for African Americans and people of color, and naming another street doesn't, doesn't put any food on anybody's table, doesn't give anybody jobs or opportunities to advance their life. So that's the negative side of this. What you say is positive, and it's difficult to, obviously, to say, no, I don't want to do this, but I've laid out for you the things that are important to me about the issue.
Commissioner Harris, I think you've heard the will of the commission, and I think your next stop is probably to build your case with the Human Relations Commission.
Yes, I most certainly will, thank you.
Additional items of new business. If there are none, Ms. Springs, will you read any communications from residents?
Absolutely, Mr. President, through you. I believe that I have it up on the screen right now. Starting with a comment from Ashley Demora and Ezekiel Ford at 504 Mason Road East. During the last meeting, Commissioner Twine introduced an initiative to curb drinking and driving. The cause is appropriate for a city with more than a dozen bars in a six-block radius. However, I find it in poor taste that a current commissioner failed to pay his own fines relating to a 9/17/2018 DUI, blowing up .156, later reduced to a reckless operation. Those fines remained unpaid until he was publicly questioned about it on Facebook last month. More concerning, just prior to receiving that charge, the city awarded this commissioner $9,300 from the Economic Development Fund. The grant money was awarded to purchase and operate a commercial bike where patrons consume alcohol while riding on a street. That amount is just under the $10,000 threshold requiring commission approval, calling into question whether that policy should be reconsidered. The applicant failed to answer questions honestly and disclose required items like delinquent city taxes despite appearing in court for that offense only a month prior. A portion of that judgment, along with numerous others, still remain unpaid today. These things should have excluded the application, but alarmingly did not. The grant money is essentially a financial loss to the city as the bike's legality is now being called into question. It failed to operate in its second and third season. Should the public not only be concerned about the potential safety risks posed to them by this commissioner's poor judgment as it relates to his city-funded business venture, but also the wasted economic development grant dollars and the loss of actual economic development due to improper applicant vetting and applicant dishonesty? What example is being set by a commission requesting more stringent adherence to the law from citizens but failing to adhere to that standard individually? How much faith can the commission expect from the city when individual commissioners shirk their own consequences until publicly exposed? How much faith should we have in the edict vetting these business ventures when this is what we deem a success? Moving on, the second one comes from Mr. Tim Schwanger at 362 Sheffield Way. He said, "A number of Sandusky-based businesses have received grant funds and appear to be operating illegally or have received grant funds and shortly thereafter moved their business outside of Sandusky city limits, potentially creating a loss of Sandusky income tax dollars." The Sam Brew Bike Tours bike, or the Sam Brew Tours bike owned by Commissioner Harris and a partner, received $9,300 from the city in 2018. In 2018, the Brew Bike was incapacitated on numerous occasions due to possible mechanical failures. In 2019, the business operated for a partial season. In 2020, the business has not operated due to COVID-19. For 2021, the owners are advertising the Brew Bike as an electric-powered party bike. In 2018, eyewitness accounts indicate the business was operating outside the mandates of House Bill 47 passed in 2016 and the Ohio Revised Code, Section 4301.62, which required the Sam Brew Bike to operate as follows. as follows. From House Bill forty-seven, as used in this section, "commercial quadricycle", which means a vehicle that has fully operative pedals for propulsion entirely by human power and that meets all of the following requirements. See, it is desig, or designed to be powered by the pedaling of the operator and the passengers. From Ohio Revised Code four three zero one dot sixty-two, as used in this section, "commercial quadricycle," meaning, or means a vehicle that has fully operative pedals for propulsion entirely by human power. In twenty eighteen, the vehicle did not have chains attached to the individual pedals while operating. The Brew Bike is operated exclusively by the driver through battery power and therefore is operating outside the Ohio Revised Code mandate. Other questions have been raised regarding the city manager's personal vetting of the business's applica, application for funding specifically the applicant's lack of truthfulness in answering questions during the application vetting process. For twenty twenty-one, this business must be brought into compliance with the Ohio Revised Code, or the city must consider filing for recovery of funds." Lastly, uh, we have one from Mr. Tom Lamarka at front, two oh six forty-eighth Street. He said, "I would like to voice my concerns for business grants that are given in good faith, and the recipients either relocate out of the city or don't actively work to make a successful venture absent the COVID-19. I don't believe the operators of the Sam Brew Bike Tours gave or made an earnest effort to make go of the business upon receiving the nine thousand three hundred business grant. I don't recall seeing any marketing efforts to promote the business. I believe the grant should meet some of the same minimums as an SBA loan would have in that you've applied to local lenders first before asking for free money. Therefore, I believe that the grant money should be repaid by any business, and it should be part of the agreement that they will repay the funds if the business fails within two years. Now, how you go about that, I don't know. Perhaps signing personally for the fund so attachments can be made later on. Secondly, I'm concerned about the Mylander Pavilion becoming a gymnastics clubhouse or gym at the same time that it's being presented as a food-serving facility for events such as wedding receptions or graduation parties, et cetera. I wouldn't want to eat a sandwich at Planet Fitness. The building is also still leaking water from the doors or roofing as water is getting in somehow. Nine thousand, or nine hundred thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars is a lot of money for leaks." That concludes our public comments.
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I, I, I do, in, in response to, uh, uh, several older, uh, grants that we made, I did have a conversation some months ago with Mr. Lasko, and he assures me that we've tightened up that process considerably, and we do have clawbacks, uh, in, in appropriate places. Uh, early on, we did not, and, and I think that the, uh, that's important that we have that, and it's important that people know that we do have that in place now.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
There's quite a bit there. Um, is, um, Mackenzie, would you put the first slide back up? Go back up to the top of that, please, so I can see it. All right, thank you. Uh, there seems to be multiple things there that, that different parts of the staff address, that I think the least we can do, since it appears that some of this tied to all three of these con, concerns. Um, can I, would it be appropriate for the s, development staff to look into what specifically is stated in, in each of these allegations and, uh, get back to us with, with a report? Uh, I've asked before that we should have an accounting of, uh, actually, the entire development grant program in terms of where it stands now, what, what businesses are successful, and have not seemed to have enough, uh, to, there doesn't seem to be any movement in the direction of providing that. But I think with all the money that we're giving out and future money, that we as a commission should, especially in light of this, expect to get some kind of report that addresses each one of these, uh, these, uh, things that have been alleged in here. Uh, in broad, general terms, we're talking about, we're talking about vetting. Uh, we have a item on the, uh, to be, for the election, to raise the, uh, raise the, the amount of money that be, can't be given out. This question about, question that, along with the, whether it was, whether it was appropriate to give it out additionally. So, I'd like to just go through each one of these things and, and have staff get back to us with an answer that it's accurate or not. Uh, it's pretty serious if these things are true, and, uh, should go from there.
Perhaps, uh, Law Department and, and the Economic Development Department conjunction can respond to, to some of these allegations and, uh, provide us, as Mr. Poole is asking for somewhat of an accountability, not just of this case, but perhaps, if you're asking perhaps of all of them.
Yeah, we should, I mean, this one specifically is very specific, so there's not obvious things.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meier.
I, I don't want to speak for the Law Department, Mr. Harris, but, uh, I, I don't mind that, that he does address with all three of these individuals' questions. However, I mean, I have been asked these questions in public and just did a little, you know, communication with staff, and at the time, and I like that Mr. Murray has, uh, talked with Mr. Lasko, and it's been tightened up, vetted up, the, uh, application process. Uh, as far as people moving on, first of all, I mean, they are grants, and they're not loans. So, that's, that's one hurdle that we have to recognize. Uh, the other thing is that, uh, the folks that move out of town, I'm not sure if there's a, a two-year program where they have to stay, but it's important to note that I know of at least one, I didn't know there were more, that did move out of town, but he still employs, uh, s, uh, citizens and, from Sandusky, residents that pay income tax. So, that relieved me a little bit to hear that. And then the other one was, you know, going back, the, the business is going back into, uh, uh, existence or whatever, going to get fixed and go back in next year. And I've been on some of these bikes in other communities. Well, I should only have been on one bike, and I don't want to act like I ride around on beer bikes, but, yeah.
I think you do.
Yeah, well, maybe I do. Yeah, just, you got me there. No, I did, I did go on one in Cleveland, and it has a motor on it, and it's, they, you are not allowed to pedal it if you have beer onboard. I, I mean, however, they have a motor on it, so like, when, when the operator needs to go move it or wash it or something, you know, he can't physically move this bike by himself, so, or he or she, so that's, uh, the reason the motors are on it, I could see. So, we just have to make sure that it's clear that, uh, if this thing goes back in operation, the motor's not to be driven if there's a cog or a cooler or whatever's onboard. That's, that's just what, uh, the, the little homework I did. I just wanted to add that for.
Additional comments, Commissioner?
No.
Move to a chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
Uh, yes, uh, I would just like to take a moment, uh, to address, uh, a few of these, um, concerns. Uh, from the onset, uh, you know, a few people have certainly, uh, questioned, um, many things regarding, uh, you know, me personally, and have made us several allegations, uh, whether it's ranging from claims of, uh, of, of racism or associating with, with not associating with black people to me stealing and or hiding money, uh, from city or particular individuals, uh, to creating false posts, as well as questioning my, uh, my position or, uh, you know, my position on, uh, our uncharitable organizations, or claims that even, uh, you know, rioters at some point were, um, were inj, uh, were injured on the Brew Bike, uh, with a lawsuit pending. Uh, which brings us here today with further questions regarding the Brew, uh, the Brew Bike. I'll address it by saying, uh, that from the onset, I worked with, uh, state agencies and our local government and, uh, law enforcement, and to my knowledge, I did everything that was asked of me, uh, to ensure that the Brew Bike was indeed, uh, in compliance and able to operate, uh, here in the city of Sandusky. Uh, otherwise, uh, you know, I can assure you that my partner and I, uh, wouldn't have invested, you know, twenty-four thousand dollars of our own money, uh, into this business venture. And, uh, with, you know, with that being said, uh, during the first couple of years, uh, we certainly faced some, uh, unfortunate and unforeseen setbacks, uh, as it relates to the mechanics of the bike, uh, setbacks that, you know, many other new businesses face in some form or, uh, or another. Uh, as far as twenty twenty is concerned, we have, we have indeed, uh, not operated, uh, due to COVID, as we cannot come up with a safe way, uh, to still operate due to, uh, many government mandated restrictions. Uh, I might also add, uh, that the establishment, uh, that we operate, uh, from in front of, is not operated, uh, at all this year. And as we know, uh, there's even been, you know, the restrictions, uh, put on our, uh, local drinking establishments, which don't allow them to serve, uh, until after ten PM. Uh, something that, as you could, you know, you might, uh, conclude that would be very difficult for us to take in, into consideration. Many of our tours would oftentimes start after six PM. Uh, taking, uh, all those variables into consideration, it would make a great deal of, uh, sense, uh, it wouldn't make a great deal of sense, uh, you know, to operate a business that, you know, relies heavily on the bar scene. But we do indeed, uh, plan on returning in the summer of twenty twenty-one. Uh, that being said, uh, you know, last comments, you know, I appreciate everyone's concern in all matters, and as an individual, as a business owner and commissioner, I will continue to learn and grow in hopes of, uh, better serving my community and those around me. Uh, from this point forward, I will continue, uh, to let, you know, my actions and my body of work, uh, speak for themselves. Uh, I'll take the rest of this time, uh, to encourage you all, uh, to be on the lookout, uh, for some positive things happening in our community in the very near future. Uh, one being, uh, a food drive on October third, um, as well as a minority business empowerment team that I had the pleasure of putting together, and also, um, an initiative on behalf of, uh, a charity that I belong to, For Love With Love, through our Drive for a Better Future program. We look to, uh, add another, um, twelve-plus students, uh, to the list of the already thirty, uh, that we've, uh, had the, um, pleasure in assisting and providing them with, uh, driver's ed vouchers. So, as always, uh, it's just peace and love to everybody, and, uh, may we continue to move forward. Thank you.
Motion for adjournment.
So, move. Who moved out?